Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021. If you would, please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Johnson.
All right, thank you. It's time to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grisgoviac to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we are down to the approval of the minutes of the March 16 meeting, and we had none absent that night, so whoever wants to put that forward.
Your honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to approve the minutes of March 16, 2021.
I second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Carlson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and those are approved. And we have several items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first one is to adopt Resolution 2145, accepting grant funds from Coon Creek watershed district and approve the water quality cost share agreement. City staff recently submitted two water quality cost share program applications to the Coon Creek watershed district for the following: goose management program, annual contracted removal of geese from high population areas along impaired creeks to reduce E. coli and phosphorus loading to Coon Creek. The city was awarded up to $3,000 of the project's total cost, which is 50%. And a Joma, J-O-M-A, cutting edge snowplow blades. Public Works proposed the purchase of four sets. These blades are designed to better follow the contour of roads, thus reducing the need for excess salt and anti-ice chemical treatments in an effort to reduce the effects of chloride loading on water bodies. The city was awarded up to $8,550 for the purchase, up 50% of the purchase cost. And the Coon Creek watershed district agrees to disperse 80% of the approved cost share amounts, $9,240, once the attached agreement is executed, and the city will implement the projects by December 31, 2021, and Coon Creek watershed district will disperse any additional remaining funds upon proof of completion. And these were already in practice on, I think, six of our trucks with great success, so that was nice. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 2145, accepting grant funds from the Coon Creek watershed district and authorize execution of the water quality cost share agreement. The next item on our consent agenda is item three on this evening's agenda, and that's to accept Twin Cities Gateway 2021 member city grant. The city participates in a regional convention and visitors bureau known as Twin Cities Gateway and receives an annual community member grant, other than last year. We didn't get one last year, but we're back on track again this year. The grant is based on the local option lodging taxes collected by the city and other member cities, and the city of Coon Rapids will be receiving $3,500 from the 2021 member city marketing grant as directed by council. 90% of this amount, or 3150, will be directed to the Community Strength Foundation. The balance of $350 will remain in the contract grants activity in the general fund. So we're looking to approve the 2021 member city marketing grant agreement and adopt Resolution 21-47, accepting the 2021 member city marketing grant in the amount of $3,500. Item four on this evening's agenda, also under consent, is to adopt Resolution 21-50, accepting a donation for a park bench. Amanda Tukic, maybe, has donated $700 to purchase a park bench as a tribute to her grandfather, Keith Yocum, who recently passed away. He and his wife, Inge, Ingi, Inga Yocum, have lived by Moore Park for over 60 years. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 21-50 to accept a $700 donation from Amanda Tukic for that bench to, as a tribute to her grandfather. Item five on our consent, on our evening's agenda, is to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor licensing to allow for expanded outdoor service. In an attempt to assist businesses impacted by COVID-19 restrictions, staff created a temporary outdoor dining policy which provides the guidelines under which our liquor license holders could expand their premises. Staff has verified that all requirements have been met and approved temporary expansions for the following locations until October 31, 2021, or unless ended earlier by action of the city council, or upon termination of the city's state of emergency declared on March 17, 2020. The two facilities are Texas Roadhouse and TGI Fridays. So we're looking to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor license premises as outlined above through October 31, 2021, or unless ended earlier by action of the city council, or upon termination of the city's state of emergency declared on March 17, 2020. Next on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 21-48, accepting grant funds from the state of Minnesota and approve Conservation Partners Legacy Grant Program contract. City staff recently submitted an application for funding through the Conservation Partners Legacy Grant Program. Over the years, the city of Coon Rapids has converted several moed turf areas to native pollinator habitats. These habitats provide a much-needed source of food for pollinators, and I love this, such as the rusty patch bumblebee that have been significantly declining. Recently, the city partnered with Anoka Conservation District and surrounding communities to help promote the Lawns to Le Jooms program within our respective communities. This partnership and program has brought awareness on the importance of providing year-round quality habitats that are needed for our many pollinators. Currently, the city has several established native planting areas which range in size from .3 acres to 3 acres, and once established, native plantings are typically low maintenance and aesthetically pleasing. However, they do require some maintenance, especially in the early establishment years and beyond. And the city was awarded $15,000 from the state to fund contracted maintenance procedures of, contracted maintenance procedures of current native planting areas to ensure a healthy and successful native habitat at each location. The state will provide partial payments as requested and outlined with funds expiring June 30, 2024. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 21-48, accepting grant funds from the state of Minnesota and authorize execution of the Conservation Partners Legacy Grant Program contract. Next item on our consent agenda is item seven on this evening's agenda, and that is to recommend reappearance of charter commission members. The terms of three charter commission members, Alden Hofstedt, Glenda Meisel, and Norman Warner, expired the end of March 2021. All three members are eligible and willing to serve another four-year term effective March 2021 and expiring March 2025. State statutes, state statutes require that a minimum of seven and no more than 15 persons serve on the charter commission. Currently, the charter commission has nine members, and at this time, only the three terms have expired. In 2004, the Minnesota Legislature revised Minnesota statute to remove any limits on the number of terms a charter commissioner may serve. Prior to this revision, commissioner, commission members were limited to serve two consecutive four-year terms. The council's recommendation for appointments are forwarded to the Honorable Stony Hill just Chief Judge for the 10th Judicial District who makes the final appointments. So we're looking to recommend to the Chief Judge for the 10th Judicial District that Alden Hofstedt, Glenda Meisel, and Norman Warner be reappointed to serve another four-year term effective March 2021, with said term to expire March of 2025. And then item eight on our consent agenda is to make an appointment to the Safety Commission. Shalonda Gordon submitted an application expressing interest in the Safety Commission due to COVID-19 and the frequency in which the Safety Commission meets. The first meeting of the Safety Commission that the applicant was able to attend was January 14, 2021. The Safety Commission, after meeting Ms. Gordon and reviewing her application, has recommended appointment to the Safety Commission. After this appointment, there remains five vacancies on the Safety Commission to be filled. I'm going to say that again because that's an important note for our residents. After this appointment, there remains five vacancies on the Safety Commission to be filled. So with this, though, we're looking to adopt Resolution 21-49, appointing Shalonda Gordon to the Safety Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2024. And the ninth item, and that is our last item on the consent agenda this evening, is to adopt Resolution 21-46. Steve Rickin submitted an application for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals in February of 2021 and attended the March 2021 Board of Adjustment and Appeals meeting. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals discussed it and recommends Mr. Rickin be appointed to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals with a term expiring December 31, 2023. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 21-46, appointing Steve Rickin to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals with a term expiring December 31, 2023. And that is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Mayor, the question is really more on the temporary expansion, the temporary liquor. If we have any other businesses, can they still apply to come in? And that will our motion here tonight allow you to administer, administratively approve, should another business say, I want to go back and do that expansion?
Mayor Cook, Councilmember Geisler, that's correct. You don't have to have the liquor license. Another restaurant could come in and they'll go through the planning department. Trevor White will review those. I review the liquor license expansions. So yes.
I just want to make sure that it wasn't just.
There's a policy.
Others were available.
Mr. Stemwell.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, the practice we established last spring was that staff could make the temporary call to approve it, but then we need to get it ratified by council after the fact. So if others come in, same process, we'll approve it, we'll ask you to ratify it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Demmer, did you still have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody who's volunteered to be on any of the committees or commissions. Obviously, that's something the city can't run without, and so thanks all, all the residents who are, who are doing that. And then thanks to Ms. Tunick for, sorry, Tukic, Ms. Tukic for the donation, and of course, our condolences to her and her family on the passing of her grandfather.
Thank you. Mr. Stemwell, I had one question on that temporary expansion. So our emergency order was kind of created in order that we could kind of mitigate some of the impacts to our local businesses. Now, when, it says that that, this will, the ability to have that outdoor dining will terminate in any of those three situations, one of which is the elimination of that emergency order. How much notice will we provide? How much, what will the notice period be?
Mayor and council, and Ms. Lenzmeyer, correct me if I'm wrong, but where we settled was that once notice is provided, you'd have 30 days to basically vacate the expansion of your expanded outdoor space. So if in July, those orders are rescinded, there'd be 30, we'd give you notice, we'd send you a letter, and 30 days from then, you'd have.
That is correct. There is also the option for them to go through a formal planning process if they are interested in making that outdoor expansion permanent.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. Item 10 on this evening's agenda is to consider Resolution 21-11 sub 9, awarding a contract for the East Reservoir Rehabilitation. On February 16, the city council approved the plans and specs and ordered the advertisement for bids for the East Reservoir Rehabilitation Project, and we're now looking to consider awarding a contract for the project. I saw Mr. Himmer was on the Zoom, that he wanted to touch on this, or was he waiting for questions?
Mayor and council, we'll have Mr. Himmer touch on it, and then we'll open it up. Go ahead, Tim.
I was just going to say I'm available for questions if anyone has any, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and read our little discussion point here. Then, this project included in the 2021 budget consists of cleaning, repairing, and painting the 5,500,000 gallon ground reservoir at the East Water Treatment Plant, originally constructed in 1967. The interior of the reservoir is in need of cleaning, sandblasting, and painting the shell and floor surfaces. Cleaning, wet blasting, and painting of the exterior shell will also be completed along with miscellaneous structural repairs. City staff will participate by emptying and refilling the reservoir, and will operate all water main valves and/or reservoir drains. With input from city staff, specifications were completed by KLM Engineering under their master contracting agreement. The project was advertised on February 26 and March 5, and bids were received March 24. We had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 bids, and the engineer's estimate for this project was between 875,000 and 900,000. And KLM Reximends awarding a contract to the low bidder, Elevation Coating LLC, for $675,000. And if awarded this evening, the project is expected to commence in late July of 2021 and be completed by October 1, 2021. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Himmer on this? Councilmember Demmer.
So when I see the engineer's estimate sort of right in the middle, then it doesn't confuse me as much, but this might be the widest range I have ever seen. Like, it's a 2X difference from low to high bidder. Is there anything we should know or be concerned about, given that spread? Or is this, I mean, just random?
Or did some of them decide they really didn't want the job?
Well, yeah. I mean, it's a big spread.
Mr. Himmer?
Councilmember Demmer, council, yeah, the, the good news is, is we ended up with a big number of bidders, and we required a pre-bid meeting. So they were all able to see their competition and know that there was going to be competition. So hopefully, it was just some sharpened pencils. There, the elevation coating is located near Clearwater, so they are somewhat close to our location. They had no concerns with their bid, and so they're, they're ready, willing, and able to move forward. I don't see any concerns.
Great.
And to empty a five-and-a-half million dollar reservoir is not going to impact our residents during summer watering season? Just curious.
Mr. Mayor, you may recall the booster pump project that we had awarded a couple months ago. We pre-ordered some of those materials, and that's why we're going to delay this project until, I believe it's the last week in July we would start, or the first week in April. So we'll make sure we have the booster pumps online and be able to maintain the storage with the other locations. And by that time, we're kind of winding down that, that summer season, although some people may disagree, and our water usage has been down a bit. So I'm not overly concerned unless something happens with that booster pump project, and then we may have to reconsider some things.
Well, then I assume those valves that sent the water to Blaine would allow water to come back from Blaine if we needed it, right?
That is correct.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 21-11 sub 9, awarding a contract to Elevation Coating LLC in the amount of $675,000 for Project 21-11, East Reservoir Rehab, Rehabilitation.
I'll second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
So I totally support this piece of updating our infrastructure. There's been a lot of communities that aren't updating their water systems like we are in Coon Rapids, so this is a great way to go. I did ask Mr. Himmer this because I had some constituents ask me about, and I understand this is just to rehabilitate the system itself and repaint it, but I did have questions about, you know, are we looking at the, the security of our monitoring systems at these water facilities and the state of our cybersecurity and things like that? Tim did mention to me that we went through some upgrades a while ago to cover that, but maybe if he could just touch on that for our constituents.
Mr. Himmer?
Certainly, Councilmember Grisgoviac, also, back in 2018, I believe, we extended fiber between our wellfields and our treatment plants. We also upgraded our software and computer system, and we continue to look at that. As a matter of fact, just this past year, and we turned it in in December, we put our response action plan together, and we're currently working to update our emergency response plan, which is due in June. So we do evaluate that often. We work with our IT group as well as Logis, and so I may be coming to you with something in a couple more years for additional SCADA upgrades, but for now, we are sitting in good shape.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mr. Himmer, you threw out that acronym. Would you remind us what SCADA stands for? Mr. Himmer?
System Control.
What, what was, do you remember what SCADA stands for? You threw out that acronym in there, I was just curious.
And you're unmuted.
Oh, he's muted. Never mind, I'm sure it's something important.
Yeah, it's System Control and Distribution Apparatus, I think? Automation? I used to.
Automation, thank you, sorry.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Was there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion, that motion carries. We're on item 11 under old business. There we go. Consider adoption of ordinance 2243, an ordinance revising city code section 5-203 alcoholic beverages. We are, as discussed at the March 16 meeting, the city's code provides that a Class B off-sale liquor holder has a license to sell off-sale intoxicating liquor in conjunction with and secondary to a permitted or conditional principal retail use, which has a minimum floor area of 50,000 square feet. Based on requests from business developers interested in bringing a grocery store to Coon Rapids, city staff have crafted a definition of grocery store to be added to the city code of the Class B off-sale liquor license. Doing so would allow for grocery operations of at least 25,000 square feet to come into the city as they would qualify for a Class B liquor license. So basically, we're kind of reeling in the Class B license a little bit tighter, a little bit less square footage, but it has to be grocery-related. Anybody want to, anything else you want to add to that, or? No? Okay. Any questions from council, or anybody want to drive this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 2243, an ordinance amending city code chapter 5-203 to amend a definition of grocery, grocery store and amend the definition of Class B off-sale liquor licensing to include a grocery user with a square footage of at least 25,000 square feet to qualify for the Class B off-sale liquor license and authorize the summary publication of the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson, and it was just, and it was to add a definition of grocery store. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 12. Consider introduction of an ordinance changing zoning from low-density residential to moderate-density residential 12691 Hanson Boulevard. In this, from the, from the Planning Commission meeting, it seems really important to point out that what we're talking about tonight is the, is the planning and not the, or the zoning, and not the site plan. The site plan conversations would come up later.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, yes, correct. That's, that's important, and I'll talk a little bit about that this evening. So this request relates to a site at 12691 Hanson Boulevard, which is at the corner of Hanson and 127th, which is currently occupied by True North Church. Church is interested in selling a portion of the property, which is outlined here with this boundary. The development details will come at a, at a later date, when, if and when they go through site plan approval. The total parcel is 3.6 acres in site, in size, excuse me, and they are proposing to, at some point, subdivide, but essentially rezone the eastern, I believe it's 250 feet, from low-density residential to, to moderate density, moderate, moderate-density residential. And I calculated, I think this is about 1.8 acres in size, which would leave the balance of the site roughly the same size, 1.8 acres. So a key point to understanding this rezoning practice is that the city has a history of making zoning and land use decisions independent of specific development proposals. That's been our practice. So the focus tonight is on introduction of an ordinance related to the zoning. There's also a land use designation, which is a function of our comp plan, but that will be addressed at your next meeting when you'll consider potentially formal adoption of this ordinance changing the zoning. And rezonings are processed through, through an ordinance, so that's why, that's why this is presented tonight as an introduction. Little bit, just real quickly on the land use designation, so this is from our comp plan. We use some similar designations but are actually different than, than our comprehensive, or excuse me, from our zoning code. So in our comp plan, we designate this as an institutional use. Churches, other kinds of public facilities are all lumped into that institutional category, and that's how we classify them as such. You can see from this map that the land use designation to the north and to the east and to the south of the subject property also has the same, a same type of designation, moderate density residential, which will eventually be part of the consideration at a, at a subsequent meeting. This is a map that shows the zoning. Couple of things I wanted to point out. So the, the development is surrounded by the Weston Woods Townhome Development, which council may be familiar with. The underlying zoning for these projects, or excuse me, for the adjacent sites is LDR2, although there was a PUD overlay. So really, the planned unit development mechanism is the zoning that applies to the, to the parcels both to the south and to the east, as well as to the north. Just real briefly, a couple of, a couple of comments, then. The proposal is to rezone from low-density residential to to moderate-density residential. Moderate-density residential typically means densities from seven, excuse me, from four to seven units per acre, and the criteria that we use in order to consider this would be basic things like public health, safety, order convenience, effect on surrounding uses, and conformance with our comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing, and there were a number of residents that did show up. I think there was some confusion about the level of details that would be provided, and both the Chair of the Planning Commission and staff explained that, that those details will be addressed at a future date if and when a site plan is approved. So there was a little bit of frustration, but we certainly noted some of the comments that were, that were made, and the developer is, is aware of those as they go through their process tonight. So the Planning Commission did recommend that the council introduce this ordinance this evening. So again, consideration tonight is really introduction of the ordinance. You would formally consider it at your April 18 meeting, and then also address the land use amendment at that point in time. So I would be happy to answer any questions. I believe the petitioner is here too, if there are questions of, of them as well.
So Mr. Ferneilius, for example, the pine trees that are on that perimeter, retention of those, that conversation would come up at the time of the site plan, if this moves forward, correct?
Correct, that's correct. The other, the other thing I want to point out too is that, this may be a little bit unusual, but really what's happening is we're shifting the zoning boundary. This is still one parcel. Churches are still conditional uses, so even if the property were never subdivided, we would have split zoning, but it really wouldn't change anything. When they go through the plat approval or subdivision process, which would be one of the next steps. the next steps, independent of the townhome development, we would want them to address any issues that come up related to the existing parking that's there, setbacks. They have to be in conformance with our code when they subdivide it, so the issues related to the church would be addressed at that point, and then if and when the development were ever to proceed for the townhomes, we would address that through site plan review.
Thank you. Councilmember Demmer?
All right, so this is a great example of, like, all this stuff is super inside baseball, right? You've got PUDs and zoning and comp plans and land use, and they all disagree with each other, so it's kind of hard to follow, like, for anyone who's not an expert in this. So, I'm going to try to ask it in ways that are as simple as possible. You showed the, the future land use designation that says this whole area should be moderate-density. It appears that that's how it's actually being used, that the townhomes today, would they fit, so not, not on the site, the townhomes that are already built, would they fit as moderate-density or as low-density, too?
So, Councilmember Demmer, good question. So, actually, right now, the future land use map reflects the use that's there now, which is institutional.
Right.
We're not addressing that this evening. That will have to be addressed as part of a subsequent decision that the council makes. So, the comp plan would also have to be amended to sync up. The comp plan and the zoning need to be in alignment.
The reason I'm asking, though, is because it's hard to visualize what's going to go on the site, if you don't know, like, because if you look at the zoning and it says what's currently there is low-density residential, and what's going into the new site is medium-density, then you think you're going to get something even more dense than what's its neighbors, right? But I think what the reality is, is you're getting something roughly equivalent to the rest of the neighborhood.
That's correct. The moderate-density residential would be similar to what is surrounding.
So, the thing that's the most outdated is actually our zoning, because we say to do LDR 2, and it's already medium-density. Again, not the site, not the site, the stuff around it. It's certainly not industrial, right?
Well, it's, it's PUD, so it's part of a planned unit development.
Exactly, but, but you show us the zoning map, which, you know, shows up on the screen that says industrial, so that's not how it's actually being used, it's being used because of a different.
That is the, excuse me, that is the underlying zoning, but PUD is essentially how we look at it.
But, but the reality, so for anyone just driving by, they don't see the underlying zone, they don't see the PUD, they see townhomes, right?
Correct.
The townhomes are essentially a medium-density use already, and so the thing we're talking about now is basically another set of townhomes that kind of look generally in density-wise like everything else in the neighborhood already. So, none of this should be really shocking, it's really just, can half the church's property turn into something that's already in the neighborhood?
Councilmember Demmer, I think that's a, a good way of maybe explaining it. Yes, I would generally agree with what you're saying.
So, we're not going to, like, a giant apartment building, we're probably going to something that fits in with what's in the, in the general area.
Correct, so, I mean, it would have to be moderate-density residential, which would be, again, four to seven units an acre, we're talking about a 1.8 acre site, so.
And maybe that was the right way to ask it. The stuff next door is four to seven units per acre.
The, the, the development next door is, is a planned unit development. I actually don't know what the, what the density is, we'd have to calculate it to determine what it is, but I suspect it's probably very similar to that.
Okay.
It's certainly not high-density residential, it's, it's attached townhomes, so it more than likely is in alignment with moderate-density residential.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think this is, I don't know what else you would stick there if the church decides they don't need all that land, it seems like something that matches the neighborhood in density is the right thing to do, and it matches the comp plan, it's just that there's three layers of confusion for anyone who walks into a meeting and says, "That's industrial? That's low-density? What's going on here?" It, it doesn't present as easy to follow for, for constituents, so I, I just think being able to talk about it in terms of, we're talking about townhomes with approximately the same density as the other stuff around it, we'll just make it clearer as we go forward.
Correct, and, and, you know, and the way that we try to frame it in planning, and sometimes it's not always real clear, is we're really talking about the use. So, we're talking about the zoning implications, and really the uses that we would contemplate with moderate-density residential would be townhomes.
And at some point, are we going to clean up the rest of that stuff?
Well, I mean, frankly, the future land use map reflects the uses that are there now. The use, the proposed uses are changing, so that's what, that's what's triggering this requirement. So, really, right now, the comp plan reflects the uses that are there and the zoning at the time that the church was, I think, originally developed, that's a conditional use. So, really, the, what's, what's triggering the change is a proposal for new development. So, there's, there, our comp plan and our zoning code are in alignment right now. But they, but they can't be with a, with a proposal for a townhome development. That's, that's what's triggering the change and the request.
We could take this part offline, but I just mean, in the future, it seems really weird to look at this and see an industrial zone, when the reality is, what's in the comp plan says future, but it's the current use, so at some point, do we ever go back and clean up the zoning to the reality, instead of having weird stuff, and then there's a PUD over the top of it, and so you got, you got to look at multiple layers to understand why this is not non-conforming?
So, I, just real, real quick on that point. So, a planned unit development is essentially an overlay district, so whenever that proposal was evaluated by the city, the petitioner made a decision not to request a rezoning, and more than likely, it had to do with setbacks and other kinds of things. So, the underlying zoning stayed the same, but the PUD overlay went on top of it. So, so that was approved as is, is a little awkward and a little confusing, yes, but it's a perfect, perfectly legitimate process that, that we've done in numerous locations, so.
To get back to this particular site, though, it's not half of the church's property, it's half of, half of the church's property. We're only talking 260 feet of the site, correct? Or is that whole box, that, is that whole box 260 feet?
Mr. Mayor, correct, the, the area that's outlined is the proposed area to be rezoned.
Okay, so that's.
It'll still be one parcel, but the zoning would be split.
That's 260 feet of the church's site, okay, so it is half the church's site, okay.
Correct.
That was what I thought all along, and then when I, then I got confused when I read this, and I was thinking that 260 feet was less than that. Okay, very good. And 1.8 acres?
That's what I, that's what I calculated, Mr. Mayor, and it's actually, from the petitioner's letter, it's 250 feet, I think, is what they, is what they outline, so.
Okay.
And that calculates it roughly 1.8 acres.
Okay. So, the, the comments, though, is the proposed rezoning would be compatible with moderate-density residential uses, the proposed change is consistent with surrounding townhome land uses for the northeast and south, and the proposed land use amendment is approved, the proposed zone change will be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, or comprehensive land use plan.
Mr. Mayor, that's what will be, that will be the decision the council will make on the 18th.
Okay, so.
This is merely an introduction.
So, tonight is an introduction.
Introduction, that's correct.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Ferneilis? Okay, then. Then what we will consider, then, is in Planning Case 21-7, well, let's see, so we're going to consider Planning Case 21-7 introduced, which includes the proposed rezoning to moderate-density That's actually the whole thing, isn't it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Geisler?
For staff, in the recommendation, it says Planning Case 21-7, but in the subject, it's Planning Case 21-6, so I just want to make sure that we've got the right reference to the right planning commission, is it 21-6 or 21-7?
Mayor and council, I believe it is 21-6.
Okay.
So, the recommendation, that, that's, that's an air.
So, there's a typo in the recommendation?
Actually, the ordinance says 21-7. An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Coon Rapids so as to provide changes in the zoning classification, Planning Case 21-7.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, we can clean that up when this comes back, but I believe it, it's Planning Case 21-6. That's what the, that's what the planning commission acted on, if I'm not mistaken, so we'll, we'll clarify that and make sure that that's.
We've introduced both, just in case.
All right, we have our bases covered. And just to clarify, according to the planning commission meeting, the zone change, which is planning commission case 21-7, the land use amendment was 21-6. So, the zone change, which is what's being considered for the council.
So, it should be 21-7.
Seven, yes.
Okay.
It's introduced. Thank you, Mr. Ferneilis. Yes, thank you, Mayor.
And then, are you covering item 13? Item 13 looks pretty, pretty simple.
It is, I can certainly answer questions if there are any.
So, item 13 this evening is to consider a site plan for use flexibility for a second ground sign, 1560 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Indigo Signs. And what threw me off was, you had to read the whole thing, and I actually had to read it twice to catch that it's the first sign for Caribou, but it's the second sign on the property, that's what we're looking at.
Correct.
Because the first sign is the county regional dam park sign.
Correct.
Okay, so, I'm good with this. Anybody need any questions, or?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a comment and put it on the record, that I find it, you know, really frustrating, the language and the things that I, I heard that the county chose to not have any good-faith conversations with the Caribou Coffee, to actually have a co-located, so there could be one sign. So, the idea that we have to give flexibility because there is already that sign, to me, it's, we have to do this, we have to give that business the sign, and again, just disappointed that the county would not be a good partner.
Councilmember Demmer?
I was actually just over there today, because I wanted to see, like, okay, can, can anyone even see the dam park sign? Yes, they absolutely can. Can anyone see the Caribou sign? Not really, right? From one direction, you can see it, and from the other, you can't. If they wanted to put this thing on a pole up higher, I would be totally fine with that, just letting people know. No?
On Coon Rapids Boulevard.
I would be willing to offer them flexibility on that, because of this ridiculous situation, but, but as stated, I think we should let them have their own sign.
See, and I, yeah, and I, I think it's perfectly reasonable for the county to have a monument sign all by themselves for the number-one visited park for wherever, which is three blocks down the road, you know, rather than making it look like there's a Caribou down at the dam, I, I, I think it's perfectly reasonable, myself. For sure, I support them getting their own sign there.
Mr. Mayor, the one comment I would make is, you know, had, had the county sign been in the right of way, this would be a non-issue, but it was placed on what was city property at one point in time, which we didn't think would probably ever be developed, so, you know, I think now we're in a situation where it's unfortunate, we didn't have any more leverage with the county, and really couldn't force their hand, so it's unusual, but I think there's a basis for considering use flexibility.
Yep.
Actually, I think people will find the Caribou, too, I mean, you know.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowiac?
The developer knew this, though, right? I mean, we're not throwing a wrench into their plan, they knew that that sign was there, and then that right-of-way was there, and that they would have to have some kind of flexibility with their signing, right? I mean, we're not, they knew that going in, is what I'm saying.
Councilmember Griszkowiac, I mean, that's a good question, you know, at what point in the process did this come up? I don't exactly know. Certainly, you know, at some point during the land use review, we brought it up. I guess Caribou could have made a decision if whether or not it was a deal breaker, but, I mean, I think from staff's perspective, we recognize that most businesses need a sign, and, and it wasn't unusual, it wasn't an unusual request, so. But, yeah, I mean, I believe they did know it, but at what point, I'm not, I'm not certain.
The only reason I ask is I know that we're really tight about our sign ordinances on, on Hanson and on Coon Rapids Boulevard, we don't really ever really give flexibility that I know of, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, they knew that going in, and the other thing is, on the map, I don't, do you have it on your machine, or on your overhead? Where is the, the Caribou sign?
It's going in the box, right?
Right, yeah, right. That, that square box right there, so it's on the other side of the property.
The new sign would be located, and this is the existing.
And that was my question, too, Mr. Demmer, was, are you going to obscure that, that sign for the park, and it doesn't look like it, so.
No.
I think this works.
Looks nice.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, so, Councilmember Geisler?
In Planning Case 21-5.
Is it, is it an introduction?
No.
Oh, sorry, never mind.
It's the use flexibility.
I'll go over here.
That was the last one.
Sorry.
So, make a, a motion to approve the use flexibility for the second ground sign based on the stated four facts in our memo, unless you need me to read them all. Okay, thank you.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We are up to open-mic public comment. Is anybody here to address council on open-mic? Anybody to address council for this evening on open-mic? No? All right. I don't have any reports on previous open-mics, and we are up to other business. Mr. Stemmle checking your notes there?
Mayor and council, I was just going to mention a few things coming up or going on in the city, certainly the best place to find out what's happening in the community this spring and summer is to check out our Park and Recreation Guide, which came out a couple weeks ago, you can also find it online. We are planning for as much as we can this summer, always with the warning that if things change and we're not able to do them, we'll obviously size things down or deviate from that plan or potentially cancel, but at this point, we're optimistic about a lot of the events that are being planned, a lot of the programs that are being planned, and then we'll adjust as needed. There's a couple other interesting things on our website as well, appoint people to, we have a national take-back day on Saturday, April 24th, from 10 to 2, here at City Hall, I believe that's correct. And then we're doing our Arbor Day Tree Sales, it's a really good opportunity to buy a tree at a fairly low cost, it's trees that are, work well in Coon Rapids soils. If you have any questions about that, you can certainly reach out to our Public Works Department and our arborists to find out more about what might work in your backyard or front yard.
Handpicked for our area, and this year, you buy them online, and they deliver them to your house.
Yeah, it's a beautiful system.
And they're out of Autumn Blaze Maples already.
And they're not just bare root anymore.
No, they're come potted.
You get a big tree.
Yeah.
One inch.
One inch, yeah, they grow fast, some of them.
I have to tell you, so my mom lost her big shade trees when they put the bridge in on Hanson, so she wanted me to order new Autumn Blaze Maples to get shade out there again. It's like, you're a hundred, Mom, you know? So, we're considering maybe getting a bigger tree.
Spaded in there for her.
Yeah, spaded in, right. All right, and then, kind of the elephant in the room that we haven't mentioned yet is, of course, Saturday night, not supported by the city, not promoted by the city, was the Coon Rapids Cruise Night again, and I actually sat down at the brewery down there for about an hour and a half, and for the most part, it was kind of that steady din. Every once in a while, you'd hear that blast, and you'd go, oh, dang it, but it seemed like they were pretty well-behaved, other than an occasional thing. I did get a few letters of complaints, not as many letters of support this week.
No. Mayor and council, I'll just mention in that regard, you know, certainly, we've talked about it a lot, but just for those who are maybe viewing at home that haven't heard as much about it, you know, the activity of cruising on the Boulevard in and of itself, there's nothing illegal about that. You know, I, I think a lot of the issues come with some of the ancillary activities, noise certainly is a part of that, potentially traffic, parking issues. Our approach this year is really to address those problem areas as best we can, and frankly, there's a challenge with that, given staffing and other things that are going on. However, we're going to do the best we can with signage and the police officers we are able to dedicate out in that area on those nights. If people do have complaints, we are asking they send them, or, or compliments, frankly, whatever information or feedback you want to provide, to the clerk@coonrapidsmn.gov email address, as we're going to try to track, week to week, sort of the volume of the information we're receiving, share that with council, and so forth. So, as council members receive those emails, you're already doing a great job of sharing them with that email address, but if folks at home want to email directly to that, you can certainly do that, you may also want to share that with your council member, we understand that, but it's a good place for us to track it.
All right, Chief Wise?
Yeah, let me just dovetail into that, Mr. Mayor, is that we do and will have extra officers that are working on those Saturday nights and will be part of the traffic flow for the sole purpose of dealing with illegal activity that does pop up. And, and I know there was one higher-profile incident from last Saturday where a person fled, and just to give the full story so people know, is that one of our officers attempted to make a traffic stop on a car, that car took off, our officer did not pursue. That car then proceeded to continue to drive in the neighborhood, crashed into other cars, at which point, some citizens started to chase that suspect car, which then caused our police officer to get re-engaged, and traffic stopped that particular car, and he was arrested for drunk driving, he was extremely intoxicated. But, of course, he's an outlier, and he's the... was extremely intoxicated. But, of course, he's an outlier, and he's the weed that we intend to pluck when we're out there working, so. But I know it caused quite a disruption in that neighborhood, and, you know, people might be alarmed by a car, for sure, fleeing, because we know there are kids there. We don't want to chase somebody either. That said, that person was going to harm somebody and needed to intervene, so we needed to intervene. So, I just wanted to give that backstory.
Thank you for the update on that one.
Chief Wise, just a quick question, chief. What is the percentage of folks that are stopped by the police in Coon Rapids that are engaged in illegal or reckless activity? Percentage from Coon Rapids, percentage from outside of town?
Well, oddly enough, the, all right, it was, there were a couple of higher-profile incidents. There was one other drunk-driving arrest that was related. There was one accident, and there were three citations written for burnouts, somebody doing burnouts. The three burnouts were Coon Rapids residents.
So proud.
Yeah.
Sorry, chief.
Yeah, and I'm not sure of the other two. I could look at the jail record, but, yeah, they're from, they're all over the place, for sure. And so, I'm, part of it is our own folks too, but it's important to keep in mind that the vast, vast majority of people just want to take their car for a drive, and their intentions are to have a nice, quiet drive and to look at each other's vehicles. So, it's good people that have good intentions with a few bad folks in there that we got to try to intervene.
I like that, plucking the weeds from the garden.
Plucking the weeds, that's it, exactly.
Counselmember Demmer?
Living over by the freeway, we hear car noise all night, and so I sometimes can't tell when it's coming from Coon Rapids Boulevard or the freeway, but it did seem like there was a lot more going on late, right? So, I totally understand that during the posted times, people are generally there for, you know, just a nice cruise, but I have no idea what we can do about the people hang out till 1:00 in Drag Race, or I think someone was whipping donuts in the movie theater parking lot or something. It just seemed like there was a bit of a fan-out of pretty noisy stuff late. And maybe people were even just, you know, burning up and down the freeway, too. So, once they spread out all over the city and make tons of noise, I just have no idea what we're supposed to do about that. And I don't know if you're seeing calls light up from a wider area than just the Boulevard at night.
Mayor and Council, is that if somebody spots activity like that, doing burnouts in a parking lot, you need to call 911 and report it. It's a big town when you factor in the number of officers that are actually working, especially when it's in the evening. Generally speaking, they're responding to calls for service. Especially warm weekends tend to be fairly busy for the officers, and they wouldn't, chances of them happening to drive by while somebody's doing a burnout would be really slim. It's definitely worth it for people to pick up the phone and call 911 and report that stuff. We need to know about it.
You know, it's hard when it's like, you can kind of hear noise that direction. You don't really know where it's from or whatever. So, I was just curious if you're getting an increased volume of calls at night, or if it's not really detectable versus your standard weekend?
You're asking me a really tough question. It was the first beautiful Saturday of the season after coming out of coronavirus. I can't even imagine how pent-up emotion, how much people had, so I.
That's a good reminder, not to necessarily blame it on the cruise either. It could just be anything, but, okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
And that's a really good reminder, though, is for people to pay attention and call 911 if something's going on.
Yes.
The city is over 26 square miles. We have over 200 miles of roads, and how many officers out there? They just can't be everywhere.
That's right.
So, if you see something, call 911, and let them decide if it's important or not.
Yep.
Thanks, chief. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Want to adjourn?
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.